Today is October twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen. It is seven P. M. On the agenda tonight is agenda approval. Approval of minutes from ten-eight, ten-ten. Warrants, mail, public comment, town administrators' report consisting of meet with paychecks, pay transfer from health officer to deputy health officer, treasurer's quarterly report, road foreman's report. Then we'll move on to old business, follow-up on bus driver contract. New business and executive session for personnel and legal as needed. And then we will adjourn hopefully before daybreak.
I have two additions. The auditor's report, can we please add after public comment? And can we add something under the town administrators' report related to landfill west and making a motion to start work there?
I thought we'd already done that.
I did too, but the, the people, I don't know, are unclear, so.
Okay, that's fine, we can redo that. And you wanted auditor's report after public comment?
Yeah.
And also, I don't care about the sequence, but we, I have some concerns about the ethics policy that was passed in the last session.
Okay.
I'd like to add that to the.
Well, that would have to fall under old business then.
Alright, old business is fine.
Okay, are there any other changes? I guess I did this out of order. We should have done a motion, a second, then discussion to make changes, I think.
That's true.
So, I'll hear a motion to accept the agenda.
Make a motion. Make a motion to accept the agenda with changes.
I'll second it.
Alright, we have a motion to accept the agenda with changes. Is there any, any discussion? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, aye. Okay, so, on to approval of the minutes from ten-eight and ten-ten. Has everybody had a chance to skim over them?
Yes.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the minutes from ten-eight and ten-ten.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, to approve the minutes from ten-eight and ten-ten. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Oh, um, sorry, just looking at it.
Kinda late to type a table there, Bob.
I know, but, but I just noticed it as I'm looking at this. The impact of taxpayers is actually in a schedule. Um, it's a, it's the one, two, three, four, fifth bullet point down. Um, and it is not forty-three thousand dollars a year for twenty years. It's actually a descending payment. Uh, the way the municipal bonds work is you pay a constant every year against the principal, and then the, 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 the interest is descending over time, so you actually pay less and less each year. And so it's not forty-three thousand for twenty years. It's forty-three thousand, I believe, the first year, and then it descends. I don't know if we need to correct that or not in the minutes, but, uh.
I think it would be clear to a point.
I don't know how important it is either, but it's just that that's the way it's listed in the minutes. If anybody wants to look at the PowerPoint, it actually has.
I've been saying, didn't even notice that.
And again, I'll have to also remind people, if they're looking at PowerPoint and payment schedule, it's based on the interest rates that were in effect the day we did that comparison. The actual interest rate will be what it is the day you secure the bond.
Okay, I guess, uh, I'll hear a motion to change the minutes, seeing as we just approved them. I think we can do that.
Mm-hmm.
Motion to rescind the prior motion on the agenda, or the minutes, rather.
No, you don't do that.
No? I thought we already did.
I think we just made motion to.
Accept the minutes with changes. Alright.
Sorry, seconded.
Alright, we have a motion, a second, to accept the minutes now with changes that were so kindly pointed out by Selectman Jarvis. Any discussion? Going once, going twice? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now moving on to warrants? Anybody? Just making sure? Okay. Alright, so, for payroll ending ten-thirteen in the amount of nine thousand, three hundred, fourteen dollars and fifty-eight cents. Payroll ending ten-twenty in the amount of eight thousand, two hundred, twenty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents. Accounts payable number sixteen ending ten-eighteen in the amount of nineteen thousand, seven hundred, seventeen dollars and seventy-four cents. Accounts payable seventeen on ten-twenty-five in the amount of, oh boy, one hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred, forty-five dollars and eighty-three cents. I'll hear a motion to approve the warrant.
Motion to approve the warrants as stated.
Okay, I'll second. We have a motion and a second to approve the warrants as stated. Is there any discussion?
I, I'd like to discuss a couple things.
Okay.
So, um, the Columbus Day holiday week, there seems to be some discrepancies in the pay stubs. That was brought up by the auditors, and I just wanna know how we're going to address that.
Uh, the explanation I saw in the email was that the way the time clock is set up, the road crew, when they were called in on overtime for the storm cleanup, the time clock will not allow them to punch in twice on the same day. So they had to write it in, so they wrote it in on Monday's day. That was the explanation I saw.
I'm specifically talking about, um, overtime being calculated on the time cards for the amount of overtime stated when the policy states that when there's a holiday, holidays don't count towards overtime. But if the road crews call, what is it called, Harry, uh, recalled, recalled on the holiday, then it counts as hours worked, and then they get the full overtime for the additional hours worked. The holiday was Monday, so that should be straight time. And then they were recalled in on Wednesday to Thursday when the overtime occurred. That would be straight time up until it hits forty, and then time and a half for anything over that. So if they physically worked thirty-two hours that week, 'cause eight hours was Monday.
Yep.
And then they worked nine hours, let's just say nine hours, on Wednesday to Thursday for the storm. They should only be getting one hour of overtime at time and a half. And I just feel that there's miscalculations happening with the overtime, which is potentially misuse of taxpayer dollars. So I wanna make sure that those calculations are correct and that we are correctly paying people.
They've negotiated the holiday rights.
I'm sorry, what?
Said, as far as the holiday, that's already given.
The holiday is, I think.
The holiday is.
Right.
What the policy states is they have to be recalled on the holiday. For that holiday.
Can we just have the auditor, one of our internal auditors, look at it and tell us what we need to do?
Yes, that would be fine. I mean, we can't, we can't not pay them, but if adjustments have to be made to next week's warrants for any overpayments that occurred, then next week there has to be adjustments to tho, to those individual items. That's all I'm saying. That when I looked, when I looked at the warrants and when I referenced the policy, that's how I interpreted it.
Okay.
I mean, I just looked at the warrants and for the time and a half, to the one that came up in question that someone asked me about, and it's for what the hours of overtime were put in on the time card, it's equivalent to what the overtime is put in for the time card, or, or the, the schedule sheet, the payoff sheet. So, I don't have a, personally don't have a problem with that. I mean, I believe it was, is accurate.
But how we're paying should match the policy.
Correct.
And if, if we as a board don't agree with the policy, then we have the authority to change the policy to reflect our practice, if that's what we so choose.
Look at that verbiage, I guess, after.
So how about, well, how about this then? How about we add this as an agenda item to next meeting? To examine it?
Clarify the verbiage, I mean.
Yeah, clarify and reinforce whatever the board chooses. We'll make it clear going forward that that's what we are gonna be doing. Whatever the decision.
But we need to look at the people that hold contracts. We need to have their contracts available also.
This is true.
That way we can do, compare, 'cause each, people with contracts, well, yeah, they're, they're.
Their pay's gonna be calculated differently.
Yes. So. That way we can look at it.
I just also wanna state that if we're incorrectly calculating payroll and it's going against what the policy states, that's a violation.
No, and that's why.
And we will be cited for that.
I thought we had straightened that out, but that's.
We did, and the language stated that if you're recalled on the holiday or on an approved vacation day, those hours would count towards the overtime. So those hours would, so if the storm hit on Monday, those eight hours would be added to the thirty-two worked, that would be forty, and then anything worked after that would all be time and a half. The storm happened Wednesday night.
You're saying.
And carried over into Thursday morning, and that's when the overtime occurred. It didn't happen on Monday.
Okay, but.
So tho, those are straight hours.
Okay, but, there, we've already given them holiday pay. That day had gone by.
Correct.
If I.
Which is straight time.
So you're saying that if you get called in on the holiday and those hours worked, then if you worked eight hours, then that's eight hours. What about the holiday pay?
We don't offer holiday pay for the eleven paid holidays. You just get straight pay.
Exactly.
Right.
So, that counts as that, towards that forty hours. That's right, that's your straight time. So any hours worked.
Okay, I think we're getting off into the weeds on this.
I think you need to read the recall, the recall section of the policy.
Okay, hold on, hold on. I think we're getting off into the weeds on this. This is, it's not in the agenda to discuss.
And we're not, and we're not payroll clerks, so.
So, I would say, as I just said, let's put it on the agenda for the next meeting, so we can want it properly.
Sounds good.
And we will have that discussion, and we will make a firm decision, and whatever that decision is, is what we will enforce going forward. That would be my recommendation.
I agree.
Are we moving forward, or is?
Yes.
Next thing on the agenda.
Can I add one thing? It would seem that whatever, whatever, if you just go with the current policy, that's fine. If you change the policy, the question you're raising should, if it's incorrect, should still be corrected, 'cause that was under the current policy.
Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
And so your, your new policy is not retroactive.
Correct.
Okay, so.
That wasn't my understanding of the policy. Excuse me.
Well, that's, well.
It's okay.
I'm gonna clarify that, so.
So, we will clarify that.
I think the employees will probably come in.
Mm-hmm, that's fine.
That's fine. They're, they're more than welcome to. We always welcome hearing from our employees.
Well, whether, whether it, um, pardon me for interrupting.
Yes.
Whether it adheres to the policy or not, as a select board, I think we can vote to make an exception, um, and do whatever, and, and pay as long as it's equitable.
I, I don't think you can bypass law because you think it's equitable. I'm, I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood you.
No, no, if, if we're not overpaying or underpaying, then I think we can, as a board, say, we're doing it this one week to, to bring everybody up to equity, and then we'll, we'll change the policy going forward. So I think even if you change the policy, we as a board can, can vote, we can't vote to change how, uh, uh, the total, the amount that people are being paid, but I think we can just say, uh, never mind, let's move on.
We'll deal with it.
Alright, so. We had a motion on the table to approve the warrants as stated. We had discussion. Is there any further discussion? Alright, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay. All opposed?
Aye, abstain.
Okay. Alright, moving on to mail.
Mr. Chairman, we have a stopple certificate for the panel transfer east, uh, from Green Mountain to Ralph Lima, and it is for your signature, sir. With the, uh, approval of the board.
Green Mountain.
Okay. I'll hear a motion on, uh, motion to sign this?
I'll second.
Green Mountain.
There's a motion, a second, to approve signing the, uh, estoppel certificate. I'm sure I butchered that word, and I apologize.
Pretty close.
Uh, for the panel transfer east. So is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 There's only a spot for one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just making sure.
It's still required a motion.
Oh, that wasn't the question. I just wanna make sure only one signature.
Do you feel left out?
Yeah, no.
We can, we can have multiple signatures.
Mr. Chairman, the Vermont Agency of Agriculture Vector Management Program thanked us, allowing to put their, uh, what do you call it, the mosquito tracking system, um, mosquito surveillance from two thousand and nineteen. They have traps from mosquitoes. They get their little legs caught, I don't know. But, uh, they thanked us, and, uh, that's from the.
Is that for, like, tracking West Nile and?
Yes, it is, okay, very sure stuff. Uh, we also have a, a letter that was given to Linda, under the impression, "The old schoolhouse was due to the Historical Society before our other schools had to be merged with the S, the S U elementary schools. Will the ownership of the schoolhouse be transferred back to the town before the new town hall gets built? If not, why not?" And it was, this was discussed at, at the town hall meeting.
Yes.
Yep, Gene, Gene was the one that brought it up.
It, you, we do take possession, right?
Correct.
Okay, so that answers that.
Let me clarify. We take possession upon the bond passing.
Upon, upon.
If the bond doesn't pass, the Historical Society will retain it.
Yes, 'cause it's their intention to save it.
Correct.
The treasurer is telling us that we have a delinquent tax sale. It's scheduled for December third, at ten A. M. at the town office. There are four parcels. A, a, a board member has to be appointed and has to be here to represent the town. So, Mr. Chairman, you have a.
That's December third?
That's a Tuesday.
Yes, December third. What day is that? I don't know.
Marlena decided it's a Tuesday.
Can we, as a board, appoint Mr. Walker to attend in our absence?
I think by law, there has to be a board member present.
Yeah, it has to be a board member.
I can do it.
Harry can do it?
Thank you, Harry.
Alright, I nominate Harry.
I'll second.
To be the one present. We have a motion, a second, to nominate Harry to be present for the delinquent tax sale. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, you, don't bother checking your calendar now. We already voted your et.
He's putting it in. I'll make sure he puts the right time in.
Putting it in the calendar.
Make sure he puts it in for the right year, Liz.
Yeah.
And that's it for mail, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. You said there was four parcels?
Yes, four parcels, yes.
Okay, you said that's it for mail?
Yes, it is.
Oh, it's a slow mail day.
We also accepted the EPA report. Your EPA report came. That is your mail.
Do they have to respond to this?
No, just, it acknowledged that it was received. It is important.
You are, you are correct. I was gonna put it for next board meeting, but we do have a third five-year review report for the panel, panel of tannery, super fun site. My intent was to, uh, read through this and give you, uh, an overview for the next.
You can still do that. At least we've acknowledged we've.
Yep.
We've, we've, we've received it.
She is correct.
Thank you.
Drink lots of coffee, judging by the size of that thing.
Yeah, I've done it before.
Alright, so, moving on to public comment. Do we have any public comment? Or did you? I, nobody else has their hand up. Please introduce yourself.
Hi, Jenny Dewar. Um, first, I wanna thank you all for the, uh, presentation for the town, um, office. I thought it was, it was well done, and, um, thank you for all the work you guys have put into it, and I really do hope the town votes, votes yes on Tuesday. Um, I wanted to ask, everyone's asking, it was a big Bennington banner article. Okay, what can you tell us about this forensic audit?
We can tell you that the forensic audit is being conducted by Graham and Graham. That the audit is scheduled right now preliminarily to run through December, depending on finding results. Could be sooner, could be longer. Uh, beyond that, we have not received a, uh, first report yet. One, I don't, I don't wanna share the personal issue going on with the auditor. They're having family trouble right now, so.
When you receive the report, will that be made public to the town?
What we can legally have it, depending on what is found in it, will dictate what we can release, if anything.
Many people are asking.
And that, that's completely understandable?
Totally understandable.
That's completely understandable. We're not, I'm not trying to hide anything, just in order to protect the town. If we can release, release it at that time, we will.
And can you say anything about why you guys hired this?
All uncomfortable saying is what I reported to the banner, that we had some concerns brought to us that we thought merited further investigation.
Is, is the contract public, a public record?
Well, the contract itself is, that's what he stated, is Graham and Graham.
Yeah.
No, I mean, the physical contract, is that considered a public record?
I think the physical contract is, 'cause the contract doesn't specify, it just specifies that we're, we're hiring them to look into stuff.
And for six years.
Yeah, going back six years, the amount of money, the estimate is for, how they charge.
Okay.
We possibly reach out to our town attorney and ask him what we, what we can and can't say in public, and ask him to help us draft a public statement.
I think that's a good idea. I mean, you know, just in the, in the transparency part of things.
Right now, we don't have any more information to share, so we don't know what.
I wanted you to say that on camera, and then I can, when people ask me, I can say, this is what I found out when I.
As, as we get reports, what we can share, we will definitely share.
Yeah. And then I do have another, another thing when you're ready.
Okay, sorry, I just leave myself a note to craft an email to our lawyer. You can, you can go ahead.
So, on Tuesday, you guys had a special meeting, and on the agenda, it said workstation dispute confusion, and you went into executive session citing personnel. I urge you to reread what is, um, acceptable for executive session and caution you to go into real exec, like, you do so many executive sessions, and personnel isn't even on the list. And a dispute over a workstation, I, the reason I came, like, is I, I couldn't believe that there was a select board meeting about workstations, but, um, but I, especially putting it into executive session when it was warned as a public meeting.
Well.
Gotta be careful.
Personnel contractual can be done in executive session, and the subject matter may have been one thing, but upon.
And how did you know that?
Listening to things. That's why we went to executive session because.
Based on the four, these four words, you knew that? You gotta be careful. Open meeting law, you just have to be careful. That's why I'm cautioning the board to be careful with open meeting law and going into legitimate executive sessions.
Good potential following that.
'Cause just stating personnel is not a viable reason for going into executive session without saying a little more about what it's about. It's just the law.
Thank you, Jenny.
The V L C T has a good write-up on, uh, not just the V L C T, but, uh, not just the open meeting law itself. They have a write-up of examples and how to interpret it.
That's it.
That's what I hear.
And I think we all have that.
Without revealing what we are discussing, uh, it would have fallen under a disciplinary or dismissal action against a public officer or employee.
Or a labor relation.
I think there may have been, I think there may have been an error about the way it was warned. I think we probably should have warned it as a personnel instead of, instead of actually. And that's where the, that's where the question's coming in.
So hopefully this will not happen again.
You know, I support the law.
We appreciate your support.
Yes.
And we're trying our best. That was a miscommunication on our part, and we will, we will try harder to keep this from happening again.
And thanks for the feedback and providing.
We do appreciate the feedback.
The documentation to support it. That's, thank you.
Okay, is there any other public discussion?
Fred?
Fred.
Okay. Is there anybody hiding behind Fred?
No, it's just Fred.
I have to make sure, 'cause if somebody's back there and has their hand raised, I never see it. Okay, so, moving on to town administrators' report.
Oh, auditors, auditors.
Oh, I'm sorry, auditors' report.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I have been given these documents to read, and I will read them through. Uh, ten-twenty-four, two thousand and nineteen, internal auditors' report, concerns slash findings. Payroll, payroll withdrawals without supporting documents, documentation. Capital purchases being paid off with no details from bank indicating payoff balance, et cetera, in the warrant. Uh, truck paid off, but no reason why it was paid off early. Bills being paid weeks and months after purchases are made. Credit cards and bills being paid late, causing incurred late fees and finance charges. Not sure what accounts late fees are being charged to. Lack of a purchase order system causing lack of documentation with bills being paid, no authorization or supporting documentation. Accounts being switched after warrants are signed. Individuals conducting works outside their scope of duty. Job, job descriptions and duties need to be identified. The elected town treasurer indicates that there are, the individual, that they are the individual that controls the town ID, tax ID number. This is invalid, as the select board is ultimately responsible for all town finances. That being said, the town clerk is being prevented from having an account with the correct ID number. If this would happen, all accounting would be in one system and reduce having a, I'm trying to.
Yeah.
Go through the, uh, yeah, have a separate set of books. At this time, we request the board to make a motion and/or directive to instruct the treasurer to release the tax ID number to the town clerk. I'll continue reading, and you can ponder that, sir. Currently, there is no separation of accountability and custodianship, which means the same person should not be handling the bank deposit, cash books, and receiving the bank statements and conducting bank reconciliations. Currently, the treasurer does both. The auditors do a monthly reconcile of what the treasurer supplies on an Excel doc to prove bank balance accuracy, and have started not opening the original bank statements. Now, even though this identified weakness in internal control does not indicate there's any fraud, waste, or abuse, not having a separation can certainly assist in concealing it. This is not new information. The external auditor who conducted the two thousand and seventeen, eighteen audit mentioned this as well. In addition, he mentioned that the town would benefit from some of these same errors we continue to find today by hiring a bookkeeper or financial assistant, someone with actual accounting background, as is the town's authority to do so. Yet, the town, ten months later, still has not done so, and we continue to see the same mistakes. Our recommendation is to consider what the external auditors have suggested. Recently, the internal auditor, internal auditor was approached by the staff and asked to stop informing the board of errors. We will always inform individuals responsible for errors of their error and work with the individual to correct the error. Some issues do not need to be reported to the T. A. or the select board for their awareness. What we will not do is defraud the community and select board by not addressing weaknesses in our system and not reporting out error and areas of concern. That was, I don't know who was that. This is from, uh, one of the other orders. Uh, great improvement in the road crew's time cards. Thanks. Couple of little things to adjust. Four road crew employees punched out seven minutes over their end of shift needs to be included in overtime. And we talked about that, that that's, uh, we have to pay that a quarter hour overtime. Already setting up a process to pay for the overtime incurred this pay period and in prior pay periods. We owe these amounts to them. Joel signed off on his employees. Great. Now we need you to sign off on his, Linda's, Darcy's, and Tom's shoes. And I talked to him about that. I sign off on him after he sees them, and he acknowledged that. Um, there was one more, maybe. The audit, it says, "Hi, Linda, the audit came up with a few process changes that we would like to see for the next warrant process. Payments for payroll withdrawals should have supporting documentation, which includes the employee's name and amounts." We need to trace these payments back to payroll registers which show the deductions. And he has an attachment. "There were three invoices in this week's A. P. run that are old, and one tractor supply where we incur late charges and penalties. Can you suggest a way for staff to be more timely in getting these bills to you? Short of having a purchase order system, every bill paid should have a sign-off by department director or the town administrator. Examples, People's United Bank and J. Landscape Company. Thank you for assistance. It would be greatly appreciated."
What's wrong I didn't get that?
I'm just reading what I got.
September twenty-sixth, that was, that was.
Month ago.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And, uh, he.
I believe we, we all received an email from Tom saying that he left this for Michael and Linda.
She said she.
Back on the twenty-seventh of September.
Well, she said she did this.
So.
No, since it's addressed to me, I'm disturbed that I didn't receive it.
Yeah, I think that was the, that was the concern. There's a memo in there, there was addressed to somebody who never saw it until now.
There was one extra here, um.
Which, which, you know, auditors, when they're here, they could ask these questions.
Yes, we could.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
That's it.
Michael, may I also have a copy of what everybody else has, please?
Hold stack if you'd like.
Pardon me while I digest and, uh, look at this.
And you think the email came to all of us?
Was there something wrong with my job description? Why is that in here?
It did.
Yeah.
I have no idea.
Oh, that was the email. Crystal sent everybody an email. She forgot some, to add something to the, she said that the auditors forgot to add something to the, hold on. Let me do this. Budgeting payroll. She sent it at six thirteen PM. Good evening, one last thing. We were, yeah. We were told by treasurer that advisors of departments, maybe that's supposed to be supervisors, couldn't be told what staff make per hour in last fiscal year when trying to work, um, in budgets that, that it's personnel information, personal information. The only thing that they could see was what was paid out versus budget with no detail per staff member. That would make it very difficult to budget for the, for new staff and for retired staff and for raises for the budget. So.
My phone's dead, so.
I just don't remember seeing this.
Go backtrack. And obviously Linda wasn't included in the email.
Oh, it was a month ago.
And her name was on it.
I haven't seen any of this.
So that's.
This is not helpful.
If, if you're gonna identify someone, then their name should be attached to that, that email also, if they're not, can deliver them, but. That's just professionalism, in my opinion.
And again, she could have been spoken to. This could have, she should have known.
Yeah.
Are you, are you always here when the auditors are here?
Yes. What I'm saying is, this is not helpful for us. If something is found, bring it to our attention. We have plenty of time to fix it before, some of these things are very difficult to undo in the payroll system especially, especially if the taxes have already been sent in.
So I would say the auditors need to make sure that they are communicating with Linda and Michael.
Yes, it kinda looks like we're being bypassed and it's going directly to Michael.
Uh, that's the first I saw it.
So first I'm seeing it or even hearing about it, and it's kinda looking like this has been going on a while.
It's dated twenty-sixth September.
This is a month ago.
Yeah, that's why I don't remember.
And if there was an issue, then it should have been addressed a month ago.
It should have been corrected then. That's my point.
Alright, so then I would say, Michael, reach out to the auditors and make sure that they are aware that they need to reach out to the affected parties when a mistake is noticed to try to correct it immediately. Uh, as, as you read in the statement.
And it doesn't need to go to Michael, right? They should be addressing the problem.
No, I'm, I'm telling Michael to tell them what to do.
Thank you.
Another question.
Sure.
You know, we have a new email system where all town email is sent to you, not your personal, but to you.
To the official town email.
To the town email. So it should be easy enough to check and see.
Oh, I'm gonna go home and verify.
Yeah, I gotta go dig through mine.
I think I was thinking the twenty-seventh, because that's what's written right there.
The other piece is, it looks to me from a distance, that some of these things are not done through email, they're do, they're done through handwritten notes.
Yeah, and then they're probably scanned and then sent in the emails, I'm assuming.
That's what I was gonna ask. Are they then, do you then receive them via email?
That's, well, yeah.
We have to figure that out.
We do.
Yeah.
Get documents that way.
I'm sorry.
I said I have, I do have a question when this gets done.
That's all I was, that there's, there should be a way of, of tracking who receives what, and so that there's an official record.
Electronic communication does come through email. Um, the only thing I'm concerned about are the handwritten ones.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Some of them are not emails, so I don't know how you track that piece unless you scan them.
But all that had to be scanned.
Without an auditor here to directly ask questions, I'm gonna rely on my TA.
I'll get back to you.
To, uh, get back to them. Uh, attaching notes to the warrants, pointing out issues, as long as they've attempted to resolve them, I think is fine, as long as it's backed up with an email as well, to have the electronic traceability of it. Uh, I don't think that's too much to ask. That way we have both. Um. Yes.
My question. So, when I was looking at this one, it doesn't seem like it's, it's stating anything other than letting us know that the tractor supply deal came in, but it wasn't paid until twenty-four days after its due date. So you weren't aware that the, that, is that what you're saying?
I, being able to physically see this, I cannot possibly sit here and answer this question without seeing what you're talking about.
So we just recently instituted a.
Right, so just a question.
Yeah, purchasing policy, so. So this would have happened before that purchasing policy.
Correct.
Right, so I guess the question is, though, if, if bills come in and are paid late, you're not notified that the bill's being paid late? Is, that's the question.
I'm not notified that they're paid late?
That's the question. Are you notified that the bill's being paid late? So when a credit card bill comes in, and it's being paid, but it's past the due date, are you not aware of that?
Yes, I'm aware of it. Sometimes there's situations that can be explained.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Which were explained, and obviously it wasn't explained well enough to the auditor. And I can readdress it with the auditor.
So there needs to be better communication between office staff, please.
There's gonna be a lot of, for sure.
All of it, everybody. Which we have discussed this numerous times now.
And this is a month old. I mean, it's like old business.
But they only do a report once a month.
I, I know, but this, we've already addressed this last month, so it, we don't need to, I don't know.
Yeah, this isn't the first we're hearing about the tractor supply. That, that's been used as an example repeatedly.
I think the tractor supply was the catalyst for our, our policy, our purchasing policy.
Right.
I mean, a couple of these things, they're not, they're not new, news. A couple of them I'm aware of, too. And why they're being presented tonight.
So should we ask the auditors if they've learned to do a twice-a-month report? I mean, if they're only reporting out once a month, it's gonna be what previously happened. I mean, it's their report. They have the right to report what they want.
I understand that.
Well, we've already talked about the tractors. We've already done this, and just to bring up the question again, I just feel is kind of rude. We've already, we've already dealt with this. And I don't know why it's an issue right now.
Fred?
From, just from listening to this, it sounds as if the work was done, um, in, in a way that, it seems like, like the person was building, trying to build a case. The way that was presented is like building a case.
That's how I interpret it.
I totally do, too.
It's almost like gotcha. And it's like, is that the auditor's idea of what their, what their job is?
They, they actually referenced in their report, they cited pages within their auditor's handbook related to some of these items.
As, as it's been pointed out, probably the first, first best step is to go directly to the person.
It's common courtesy, yeah.
As a courtesy.
Okay. So maybe we should call, maybe we should call all the auditors in and just have a big pow-wow.
I'm going to talk.
Sometimes there's an issue with mail delivery, which is out of our control.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to talk.
I would appreciate that. Uh, if, if they request to see the select board before our next meeting, then please notify us so that we can attempt to warn a meeting in a timely manner, if we have to do a special meeting.
Better, we'll add it to the agenda.
Or we can add it to the agenda for our next scheduled meeting.
This seems like a rerun of an incident with auditors from a few years ago.
Well, they do have an obligation, as listed in their handbook, to notify the public.
Yes, I know. Yes, I know.
So maybe this was their way of doing that. Um, I would just hate for a picture to be painted that they're doing something malicious without any of them being here to speak for themselves.
Nope, and, um, I, I agree with that, but I also, it would have been nice if one of them was here for the presentation of their report.
It wasn't warned.
We talked about it when Crystal was here last time, that she was coming for the report.
She has a family emergency.
Yeah, she has a family emergency. She's.
I was gonna say, from my, my sense, it was something that was added to the agenda, because it wasn't on here.
Well, it's supposed to be a standing item to happen the second meeting of every month. So, Michael, can you have that added to the agenda again?
So I'm gonna say that some of these issues we've already addressed as far as the purchase, the purchase policy. Um, going forward, if any of these incidents happen again, then that, that's gonna become an issue. Unless there's a legitimate reason, like a bill gets lost in the mail and it comes in a month late. Okay, that's beyond our control. But.
And again, the communication needs to be there.
Yeah, there needs to be communication. If the auditors are finding stuff, they need to be bringing it to staff attention immediately, and I would like to see them not wait to bring it to our attention. I just want better communication overall from everybody. It's not directed at just them, it's everybody. The only way to better serve the taxpayers is this, this town hall and all the employees need to communicate.
Directly.
With each other. It's okay to have a face-to-face conversation. It's okay. I give my permission. It's okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, are we moving on?
Yes, please.
Mr. Chairman, I introduce Mark Merrill of Paychex. We had talked about electronic payroll systems.
Hi, Mark. Sorry to make you sit through all that, sir.
And, uh, gentlemen, I'd like to show you his, uh, his payroll system, and you can ask him any kind of questions you want.
Okay.
Josh, we're gonna turn the lights out because the presentation's gonna be that way.
We're gonna attempt to use the Venetian blinds as a projector screen.
The, uh, the inside, the, uh, outside light? That's, no, the other one. That's the one. Thank you. He's gonna display it.
No, 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 the other one.
Here, why don't they use, they see it, y'all.
Everybody at home thinks that just.
That was email. I saw that before everybody came around.
I am so sorry about that. Keep bumping into people, sir.
What are you doing down there?
Sorry, I was trying to get that.
Thank you very much for having me. Uh, Mark Merrill from Paychex. Um, two seconds, a little bit about me. Uh, been with Paychex for eleven years, um, so I've been doing payroll quite a bit. Um, we are based, our local, uh, closest office to here is, uh, all New York. That's where our actual physical payroll specialists sit, that's where our payrolls are processed. We do have offices all over the country. Um, just so happens, the closest one to you is about forty-five minutes away. Um, Paychex is a company. We have about six hundred fifty thousand clients nationwide. We basically specialize in small to mid-sized payroll. Okay, what does that mean? Um, any businesses between zero and a hundred employees is kind of our sweet spot, okay? Um, our system, which I'm about to show you, our Paychex Flex system, is a combination of a few things. It's the payroll piece of it, it's the timekeeping piece of it, and it's basically the compliance piece of it, okay? It's kinda crooked and kinda hard to see, um, but this is our Paychex Flex system. Um, if you kinda look, I'm gonna move this a little bit just so we can see. If you kinda look down the left-hand side here, um, these are all our function keys. And the biggest piece to our system, and what it's gonna give you, is gonna give you transparent, real-time data, okay? Our system is nice because everything is literally up to date to almost a second, okay? Whether you're looking at timekeeping, whether you're looking at payroll reports. Our custom analytics, you can run over a hundred and sixty pre-canned reports. Above and beyond that, any information we have in there, we can create a custom report for you, okay? So it's gonna sound a little silly to say, but if you need to know how much fight do you spend every Tuesday of the month, we can run that report. So anything you put in can be put out, okay? Um, I'm gonna kinda just click through here, and then have some high points, and if there's anything in particular anyone wants to see, just let me know, okay? Um, a big piece of, uh, what me and Mike discussed was the timekeeping aspect of our system, okay? Um, and whether I should reference it or not, because I'm not really sure about the rules, my first town meeting, so please bear, bear with me in a very long time. Um, depending on the policies you folks have in place, we will load your policies into our system, okay? So depending on, you know, what your holiday policies are, depending on what your punch-in, punch-out policies are. And to kinda give you a little example of what I mean, um, when employees come to work, okay? If an employee's supposed to work at six AM to five PM. Our timekeeping system is not only gonna keep their time, it's gonna keep their schedule, okay? So we will upload your employees' schedules, what they're set to work. I know there's different times where they get called in, snow emergencies, all that's perfectly fine. We can put that in the system, um, as needed. The system itself will follow your policies. So if someone comes to work at five thirty and tries to punch in, it's gonna punch them in, but it's not gonna start calculating their pay until what your policies have dictated. So if they start getting paid seven minutes of, if they start getting paid ten minutes of, whatever you have to decide for your, for, for the town. Um, approvals. So we can set different levels of approvals for employees, okay? So, our time clock system can be set up a few different ways. So we can actually put a physical time clock in a location where your employees are at. We can do mobile punching. So anyone, everyone has a smartphone, you can do mobile punching. Um, we can do telephonic punching. So if you have some employees who are not too handy on smartphones, they can actually call a number and punch in and punch out, okay? Um, our system is completely geo-fenced and geo-tracked. So you can see, and every time an employee punches in and punches out, you will be able to see where they punched in and punched out from, if you want to, okay? Um, you can keep track of overtime. You can keep track of employees' hours. There's a great budgeting tool in here, and it's gonna be kinda hard to see, I'm gonna move the screen a little bit here, so bear with me. My computer's not cooperating. So there's a great budgeting tool here on the right, which is really hard to read. Um, and this goes back to our scheduling module. Our scheduling, we are gonna upload your employees' schedules into the system, and you can see on a day-by-day, hour-by-hour track where your employees are pacing compared to what you budgeted, okay? So if you need to know if your employees are approaching overtime, if you're under hours, over hours, this system will tell you, okay? Um, the last thing we wanna do is inundate you with emails, but literally, any notification you wanna receive from the system, it will let you know, okay? Speaking to the times where you have employees who have to come in late nights, when they have to come in during snow emergencies, depending again on what your policies are, we can set this system up to basically allow employees to punch in at, if it's a specific rate during a specific time, this system will handle multiple rates, okay? So the system will know, hey, if this employee punches in at three o'clock in the morning, there'll be a drop-down menu, and it'll say, you know, snow emergency. It'll say whatever you currently have that employee doing, okay? We can put that in there, okay? Anything that, if there's, and I'm not sure if there are supervisors out in the road, I think we talked about that sometimes, but, um, anything that needs to be approved, your supervisor can go to that first level of approval, then you can go above that, and then ultimately to whoever it has to go to, okay? Um, trying to hit a lot of things in a small period of time, so if I go too fast or you don't know something, please just stop me and let me know. Talking about employees' time off, talking about employees' approvals, this system also has a way for employees to clock in and clock out as far, excuse me, has a way for employees to submit their time off requests, okay? Depending on who the employee supervisor is, that time off request can be submitted from a computer, can be submitted from a smartphone, okay? Anything you can do from a computer with this, you can do from your smartphone. It's complete mobile technology, okay? Our system is still based on small business, though, so you get a dedicated payroll specialist, okay? I know we spoke briefly about the Vermont-New York thing. You will get a Vermont-based payroll specialist who's familiar with Vermont compliance, and that's the person who's assigned to your account, okay? So if you are more of the type of folks who wanna talk to someone instead of going online and doing everything, you can do that. There is no pre-canned way you have to use this system, okay? Training. There's a lot to this, and there's a lot of different functions this system will be able to do for you. This is just a timekeeping, I'll go into payroll in a second. There's a bunch of different ways that we will do training for you. First and foremost, you have your payroll specialist who is with you forever. They are responsible for ongoing. First and foremost, you have your payroll specialist who is with you forever, they are responsible for ongoing training. Any new, um, clients who come on, we do daily trainings twice a day, ten o'clock and two o'clock every day at our, uh, corporate office in Rochester. They will WebX right into your computer or on your sm- on your, uh, smartphone, and they will do a training with you to take, just give you a kinda basics of how things work. Above and beyond that, we're gonna give you what's called a multi-product specialist. This person knows everything, so with Paychex, if there's ever a concern, a question, whatever, you're not calling twelve different people, okay? You have one contact number, which is your multi-product specialist. This person can field questions about anything. We are open eight to five every day, if it's before eight in the morning or after five at night, we have twenty-four-seven support, it's based off our Rochester branch, okay? You dial the same phone number you dial for Paychex here, and it will send you right to there. We have a new fancy phone system, which is kinda frustrating for me because my wife's a client, and when I call the office, it sends me to her payroll specialist, so I can't get my assistant. Uh, but we have a phone, uh, phone system that will recognize the phone numbers you give us, and when you call Paychex, it's not gonna put you through a call queue, no one hundred numbers. It's gonna send you directly to your specialist, so you're not waiting on line, you're not waiting, trying to get an extension on that, okay? And then it kinda click back here, with the payroll system itself. Ah, come on. So, I'm actually gonna put on the reporting piece of it. The, this is our reporting and analytics, and again, it's very hard to see, I do apologize. Um. Any possible report you can think of is included in here, and this is just a little list of what we include. Our system is completely downloadable to CSV, Excel, even PDFs, if you want, okay? Um, I know we briefly discussed the accounting software that you folks use. Um, any type of accounting software these days will take an upload from an Excel file or CSV, we can map your system. We can basically give you a file that will be uploadable into your accounting software, okay? What does that mean? So when you do payroll, if you guys don't like posting anymore, so basically here's all the payroll reports, now we have to post to our accounting software. We can give you a file that will be uploadable into your, into your payroll system, okay? From a reporting standpoint, and I know we briefly talked about the warrants and everything like that. Um, when payroll's processed, okay, literally, the second it's processed, you can, you will have access to your payroll reports, okay? So we can generate a report for you, however you folks want it to look for your warrants every time you do your meeting, and it will put whatever numbers on there that you wanna see. So, the nice thing about our payroll system is, you can go in, you can submit your payroll hours and not hit the send button, so they'll just be in there, and you can already pull up reports. We give you access to your payroll journals, your cash requirements, your department summaries, so you can pull reports from the system without even processing payroll, it's nice, okay?
Do, do.
Questions?
Sure, um.
Please.
So, uh, uh, you did talk about it being, uh, you can export data from here and you can import data into here, so you can import things, but, um, but it's not really integrated with our system, right? It's, uh, the integration is, is a download and upload.
Exactly.
Um, and then, uh, I guess what about formatting of the data in order to be able to get it out and into another system, or out of another system to get it over here?
So typically, what's gonna happen with your accounting software, there's gonna be a chart of accounts, there's gonna be some type of format that the sys- the system will accept. Um, typically, it's a one-hundred number, you can call for your accounting software, and just say, hey, look, I'm looking to integrate with my payroll, can you send me a mapping file? And the mapping file will give us what we need, cause it's gonna sound a little silly, but when it comes down to the upload and download into the system, it's really about the columns, this way and this way. And we just need to line them up based on what your system will accept.
Okay, so, so part of the service is to actually do that mapping, and create the report, so that it'll be downloaded, it's in the right, it's in the right format to get it into either a CSV or Excel.
Oh, yeah, we, we do, we do that for you. Yes. Yes. Mm-hmm. And that's all part of the service, we do all the mapping, we create all the reports, there's nothing you have to do there. Our sales engineers will basically do that for you, we just need to know how it needs to look for your system to accept.
And so, and then part of the training is, here's how, here's how you take the file and upload it into here, and here's how you take the report and upload it into here.
Yes. Yeah.
Um, and then, uh, and I assume it's a web-based system, right, so it's, it's on your servers, it's not, no hardware we have to buy.
Yes. Nothing you have to buy, it's all cloud-based, it's all real-time. Um, hit very quickly, just out of note, about Paychex, about security. Um, we take security very seriously, um, in our over, almost fifty years of being around, we've never had an issue with breaches. Um, and a couple of things that we do that kinda make things look different is with our system. Everyone nowadays has username and password. We have usernames, we have passphrases, so if you don't like great big long passphrases, that's one thing you may have to get used to with Paychex. So, uh, my passphrase for my computers to log in myself is eighteen digits, so we take security very seriously. Above and beyond that, we track and map every single person that logs into this system, okay? Every single person gets a pa- a username, a passphrase, and a PIN number, okay? So if someone said that they lost their username and password and someone took it. People create their own passphrases and they create their own PIN numbers, we don't even know them, okay? It's encrypted in our system, so if someone says they lost it, they either left it lying around and someone, whatever, so. Um, we will track in real-time any time anyone's in the system, okay? And we can give approvals to people for only certain things, so if you have, um, town accountants that need to do the books for you, but say you just want them to see the numbers. And not see social security numbers, not see pay rates. We can limit all that for you, okay? If there's ever a question about, well, you know, this payroll's processed, who did it? Simply call your specialist and say, oh, here's the username that was used at the time and date, and we can tell you exactly. Our system is all about transparency and compliance, that's what we're all about, okay?
And, and, and there's, there's like help for a password, I'm, I'm sorry, I just jumped in.
Oh, no, you're.
Yes.
Uh, just password protect, I mean, uh, I'm sorry, password reset, so if somebody forgets their password, they click on the button that says, uh, help with password, and then they get an email or something.
Oh, yes. Yep, there's two ways, so if the system locks you out, if there's too many failed password attempts, we will have them talk to your payroll specialist just to reset it, and then you'll go in. And the reason we do that is if someone tries to log in too many times, too many failed attempts, we just wanna make sure we're talking to a payroll contact, and they know someone tried to log in too many times. They'll reset it, the person will go in, hit the set, the forgot password, and go through the process again, okay?
I have a couple of questions, so my first one is with the federal records retention laws, and then the state municipal records retention laws. Are you able to go into our, would you be able to go into our particular account and set the various types of documentation that has to be saved? For the varying number of years to, um, be cleared when they're no longer need to be re- retained? Whether it's a three-year period on one type of record, seven-year period on a different type of record?
So our system holds everything for ten, so we're above and beyond what those would need to be.
Okay.
And then if there's ever a chance where, say, hey, you wanna, you wanna say, hey, look, we want, we're been here for, coming up in ten years, we want you to keep our information for longer. That's a, a simple conversation, okay? We can keep things longer, um, but we kinda go above and beyond in the beginning, and if there's, we have, I have a few clients, I signed up, my first start working here, where. Cause I'm, I'm in eleven years now, so we just kinda, we're going through that conversation. Um, ultimately, at the end of the day, your information will always be stored with Paychex, the only difference is, you may not have access to it from here. You may have to call your payroll specialist, and they may have to go pull off the server for you, okay?
So, my other question in, in relation to that is, what do you do to permanently delete the records? Cause we all know that if you hit the delete button, it's not really gone. And unfortunately, if it's held on for a longer period than retention, we're liable for that during an audit if they choose to go back and look at it. So if we say we only want whatever the payroll record retention is for wages, or retired and/or, um, employees that have left for three years. We say we, oh, we want it cleared after three years, but you, you're saying that you hold it for ten?
We can keep it for ten.
Okay, so, so if we say we want it cleared after three years so that we can't be held liable in the event of an audit, okay?
Yeah, so this all goes back to implementation setup, so when you implement with Paychex and we set you up, there's a bunch of, we call them interviews, they're phone calls, that take place. Where we need to learn your policies, we need to learn how you folks want things done, okay? Um, and all of this stuff, in particular, will be done in that process. So if we need to basically say, okay, we want you to hang on to info for three years, and then hit the delete button, that's perfectly fine, they'll wipe the servers, they'll do what they have to. I can get you the exact process.
Drill holes through the boxes?
I, I can get you the exact process, cause I can't speak intelligently about that, cause I don't know exactly what the process is, but if you need to know, I can absolutely get that for you.
Um.
Harry? The other, I know presently, certain things cannot leave this office. So having an outside storage versus in here or onsite, I didn't know what the legality of that is.
Isn't it, as long as it meets FISMA?
I'm guessing that it's probably the, the fact that it's password-protected and it's only accessible from this office, I don't think it matters where the server's located.
Right.
I think, but I mean, Nemrick is on the cloud now, so technically Nemrick's not stored here.
And it has to meet the federal, what is it, the Federal Information Standards Management Act?
Yeah, and I, with, I can't tell you who, I would have to ask them first, but we have several other towns that are on our payroll system, and I can absolutely bounce a question off them, and. If they're okay with it, I can give you a reference and you can talk to them, and if you wanna just, you know, see how, see how they're doing and stuff, but. Um, honestly, as far as the, um, what's being stored in our system, because basically, you're outsourcing your payroll, I've never run into a situation where they say, well, no, no, you. Those records have to stay here, not to say it's not gonna happen, but I can ask a question for you.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I can, I can, I apologize so much.
I have one more question. With the changes in the, um, Fair Labor Standards Act, how do you ensure that you're staying up, especially like next year, January first, when the big change comes to W fours? How, how will you ensure for us that you guys are on top of it and we're not gonna get in trouble because we didn't meet whatever the requirement is?
So, we have an entire team of HR and compliance folks, okay? Part of our system, part of what we give you, is we give you, in, in here, is a do-it-yourself HR system, which just went away, and I do apologize, this ain't no signal, and I'll turn it on in a second. We have, part of our system, we will give you, whether you wanna do it at the beginning of the year, middle of the year, we will give you a free HR review. Folks from Paychex will come in here and sit down, and whatever you want them to look at and go over, they will. They will brief you on the new laws, okay, and they'll make sure you're up to date on them. As far as updating our system, anything that's hardcoded, um, so, you know, when, uh, minimum wage changes, stuff like that, anything that's hardcoded, our system will automatically change it. We have a team of lawyers, a team of compliance folks that are constantly doing that, that's what you pay us for, okay?
Right.
Um, just from individual, individual policies, cause every client is different, and every policy is different, we will make you aware of everything, okay? And it's up to you to say, okay, you know what, yes, let's do that, okay? Um, but you will get as much or as little information from Paychex as you want, cause Paychex get, has a bunch of different levels of service, okay? Um, I kinda handed out, and I do apologize, I only brought five out of the line five. Um, I handed out just kind of the proposal I, I gave to Mike, and there's a bunch of information there, just about everything that we offer. Um, what I was telling Mike is, everything we talked about as far as with the timekeeping, you know, what your employees are doing. I can give you a very inexpensive payroll system, and it'll work, it'll process your payroll, is it gonna fit your needs? And that's what it's gonna come down to. Um, we have very basic time clocks, people punch in, punch out, it's all online. Is it gonna handle the night crew stuff? No, there's some manual work there, okay? Um, the solution that I put in front of you is based off of everything, all the information that I've gathered, okay? So. Based on what your need is, this is the best solution for you. I don't wanna sit here and say that we're gonna, we're the cheapest payroll system in the world, cause based on what you need, this is the best option. I, based on what you're getting, I al- I always tell folks, please shop me out to a competitor, but apples for apples, pricing-wise, it won't beat my price. You can find a cheaper payroll system, you can go online, you can get the, you know, QuickBooks of the worlds and stuff like that, a lot of do-it-yourself, okay? Um. Questions?
Bob, or Harry, I didn't see who got their hangup first. Fight it out, ready, go!
Go!
After Bob finishes this question, I wanna know if Linda, being the end user, has any questions, so.
I, I haven't seen any, any hard copy of anything, so I, I would like to have time to review that.
You can take mine, I'll stop back in a minute.
Thank you.
And I can, um, email if everyone, and you guys can, you know, have.
Oh, that, that would be good. Um, so, uh, you said at the beginning it was six hundred fifty thousand customers, um, and your sweet spot is zero to a hundred employees. Um, uh, I guess, how, how many of those, or, uh, uh, just a ballpark estimate, is how many is municipal versus private organizations?
I can get you the answer.
I just look, I.
Yeah, I mean, top, top of my head, like I say, I've been here for eleven years, I've set up somewhere around fifteen hundred clients, and I would say probably five to ten percent. Maybe like seven is probably, probably the, the, the sweet spot there.
Any in Vermont?
Yes. And, and again, like I say, um, if you folks want some references, I can get them for you, I just have to run it past our clients first, I can't before I give out information.
Yep. Yep.
Uh, but we can get you two or three names of folks, you can reach out to them, bounce questions off them.
That'd be great, yeah, that would be really good, thanks, how they're using it, yeah.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think we would like to hear, you know, references.
Thank you.
Sure.
Oh, what did we hear with the annual?
We haven't got to the cost yet.
It's all, it's all in, uh, on there, so, yes.
It's like buying a new car, they gotta tell you all the positive stuff before they hit you with the price tag.
Well, we try to go through everything, so, but if you look at the back page of what I handed out to you. Um, there's a few different costs in here, we'll kinda break everything down, okay? Just, just from a weekly processing fee, okay? Everything we do is based on how many employees you process. I know weekly it could, it can vary based on who's working, who's not working, okay? This pricing I did, I did off of fifteen employees, okay? So, weekly service fee is eighty-nine dollars and one cent, don't ask me why the one cent's there, that's what the computer told me. Um, based off of that number, for every employee you go below fifteen, it goes down a dollar ninety-three. For every employee you go above fifteen, it goes up a dollar ninety-three, okay? How our price is comprised is, there's a base fee, and then there's a per-check fee, okay? So basically, if you took a dollar ninety-three and times it by fifteen, and subtracted it out from the eighty-nine dollar number, that's your base fee, okay? Down the right-hand side where it says value-add services, there is a number there, it says monthly clock lease, okay? If we were to give you a physical time clock to hang, you know, where the work, uh, where the road crew is, it would be seventy-five dollars a month, okay? There's a couple of ways around this, okay? The first would be is if you have a old PC somewhere that you can set up, we can set up a link behind the PC where they can clock in, clock out. Uh, the second, which is a lot less expensive than paying a $1,000 a month, is an iPad. If you wanted to invest in an iPad for a few hundred dollars, we can hang that on the wall, and they can, I can actually turn it into a little kiosk, and they can take clock in, clock out right from there. Um, we don't need a physical time clock, you don't need to have one. Um, I'm not sure how technologically advanced all the employees are, but if people have smartphones, anything they can do from a time clock, they can do from a smartphone.
Some of the road crews still use flip phones.
I, I, I didn't wanna do a soup, I just, I, I didn't wanna do a soup. Um, like I said, I've been doing this for quite some time, and I have yet to come across, you know, people who are, a- anybody that has complete, you know, everyone's completely on, on smartphones, but.
I believe Poundle got, uh, touch-tone phones, somewhere in the late nineties.
My, my aunt and uncle still have a rotary phone, believe it or not, but. Um. Annual fees, okay, so at the end of the year, we are gonna do your W twos, we're gonna do your, um, ten ninety-nines, if you want us to, you don't have to do after Paychex, you can continue to do it, however you do it. Um, but annual fee is a base fee of seventy-five dollars and six dollars and seventy-five cents per W two. Okay, it's a one-time fee at the end of every year.
That's not the monthly charge?
Nope, so right down there on the bottom.
Okay.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry, what went up, yeah, so based on fifteen employees.
Right.
It would be two hundred ninety-one dollars is what the annual fee would be.
Right.
And that gets charged typically the second week in January.
Yep.
And it'll, based on how many employees, again, this is based on fifteen, probably be a little higher, cause you guys have sometimes twenty employees, okay? One-time implementation fee to set up the system of two hundred and fifty dollars, that goes towards payroll, that goes towards time clocks, okay? Um. There is no charge for quarterly processings, there's no charge, um, for any of the services included in here, except for the, the fees that we went over, okay? The only time your fees change is when that employee count goes up week to week, okay? Really quickly, just to make sure I hit on everything and just make sure no one has any questions for me, so basically, what's included in here? Payroll processing, of course, um, tax payments. Not sure if people watch the news, and I'm not gonna name names of anyone, but just know Paychex is fully insured and bonded, okay? In the event of any issue, almost fifty years, we've never had one, we are insured, clients, we insure clients for over twenty-five million dollars, okay?
I think Michael has a question.
I, I see, yep.
Well, what is the average return on investment, in other words? Uh, what's the a- average, um, number that, uh, you would expect to see in mistakes that are corrected that would cause us, that. This to, uh, pay out, be worth it?
Yeah, so, and I can actually put a calculator together for you folks, if you wanna give me just some basic information, no particulars, I'll give you a, a natural number you can look at. But typically, the nationwide average as far as punching goes is somewhere around seven percent, okay? So basically, seven percent of all punches are not being accurate, whether it's people punching in too early, punching in too late, okay? So if you look at weekly payroll, it takes seven percent of that, and I'm not saying that's gonna be your number, but that's the nationwide average depending on businesses. And that's kinda what you're looking at, okay? Cause when you think about it, especially if you have, you know, ten people clock in one day, and I'm not sure how many people actually clock in every day, it's about ten. But if you have ten people clock in one day, and everyone clocks in five or ten minutes early, there's an hour. They do it at the end of the day, there's another hour, you do that a couple of days a week, so, you know, and then depending on overtime, depending on what your policies are, you know? There are some folks, and it's, I, I truly don't believe people do anything maliciously when it comes to this, I just think people get used to a process and, and they do it. Um, but you know, if you're supposed to be at work. But you know, if you're supposed to be at work at six o'clock, and you punch in a quarter of, you know, that's money that technically you shouldn't be earning, okay? When it comes to the overtimes, I know you you folks are discussing that, um same thing, you know, we'll put those policies in the system based on what you folks are looking for, and the system will do all the calculations for you. So if there's ever an error made like that, well, that's on paychecks, that's not on you, okay? It's very hard, once an employee has been paid legally, to get the funds back from them. Um you can ask them nicely, they don't have to, um but it's very hard once the funds have been paid out, so this system, like I say, will give you the ability to look over everything very in depth before you before you actually hit the submit button.
If I may, one of the experiences I had with electronic payroll system is, when he's talking about, okay, let's say three o'clock in the morning, and Joel calls somebody and says, I need you to check in. As soon as he checks in, he's on the payroll, there's no ambiguity, they don't have to go back and go, uh what time did I punch in, you know? They're on the clock.
Just think about too, if there is a snowstorm and they're out there for eight hours, yeah, I don't blame these guys, they're probably very, very tired. They've got to clock in, clock out, oh, what time did I do it, again, it's not done maliciously, but you know, the nice thing is with the mobile punching, so even if you I take it probably your supervisors have mobile phone uh smartphones, even if the employee doesn't have it, as long as the supervisor is aware of it, they can clock in and clock out for the employees. Again, we give them all the telephonic numbers, so as long as they can dial the phone, there's really no excuse where they can't clock in and clock out. So that's there for them. Uh but the other thing too is you can, some people do get concerned about where people are punching in and punching out from, and that's where the geo fencing comes in. So there's a little map that's gonna get put by everyone's punch that you can just click on, and it'll show you where people were when they used the mobile punching, cuz it's all GPS.
And I imagine with a a couple of comments, but the other question is, I imagine with the with the supervisor approval, if somebody didn't punch in, it can be corrected.
Yes.
So the supervisor, so a road crew goes out, he starts plowing.
Yes.
Like four hours into plowing, realizing I never clocked in.
That could be corrected.
So you'll get alerts, okay, and again, this is where you'll get as much or as little information as you want, cuz the system will literally alert you to almost anything. So if someone forgets to punch in, if someone forgot to punch out, if someone's approaching overtime, if someone's clocked in on a day that they're not scheduled, whatever you want the system to tell you, i- it will tell you. The other big thing is, every time a punch is corrected, there's a note section. We are very big on notes, so you can put in a reason, hey, this was punch was corrected because of X, Y, and Z, this is why this punch was edited. You wanna put as much information there as possible, because again, you're affecting someone's paycheck when you're editing.
Mark, is that is that can that feature or that function of the note be required? Because I do know that it's a it's a payroll law that when you cha- when you physically change somebody's punch in or punch out, you physically have to state why.
Yeah, so.
So can that be mandated that you have to put in, I mean, I guess you can't mandate how long the comment needs to be, that that there is a comment.
You can, so two sizes, you can mandate, so basically what happens is when you when you edit the punch, the field will not let you hit the next button until that field is filled in. Now, now again, this doesn't stop someone from saying, and I'm not saying anyone would do this, but this is stop anyone from saying punch corrected. So it's gonna require you to put something in that field, but at the same time, it's gonna keep track of who did that edit, so you can know, okay, well, why wasn't this detailed?
So you know who to go back to.
Uh Harry or Bob. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to know, so if I'm the supervisor and I make a change, is there a spot where either that individual gets an email or a text stating there's been a change to your time report?
So what they can.
That way they're notified.
So what they can do, it's not gonna be a text or an email, um the employee has access to their time card directly on their portal, okay? So the employees are gonna need the portal, and this portal's gonna give them access to pay stubs, W twos, time off tracking, and their time card, okay? So they can check their time card at the end of the week compared to what they punched in compared to what they were paid for. So they can see that information at the end of the week, so it's not gonna tell them every time someone goes in and edits it.
Well, okay, my uh he was, my employee, he punches out Friday, puts it, he put in all his time, you know, Friday. I either come in on the weekend to take and approve certain slots, and if I make a change, how if I don't remember it, depending on what's going on, if I don't call him up, say, hey, I had to make change or you did this wrong, I think there should be some notification process attached to that, so the employee knows, so if say I docked him four hours of a call in or whatever, you know, whether, because if he's already copied, uh printed off that uh final total of hours worked and all that, and that's what he's, you know, and he puts it away, so once he gets a paycheck, he can look, all right, I got, you know, eighty hours, six hours overtime, but wait a minute, only got two hours overtime, what the hell's going on?
How do you guys handle the process currently when that gets changed?
Well, can I ask to uh just to 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 piggyback on that? Um that would it would solve it if he log- if he logged in, and there was some kind of an alert that he looked at, if something was changed. So I, rather than a text or an email, they log in, and they have a little insignia that gives you an alert.
On their time card.
We get an email, if there's any changes, there's an email sent to us.
On their time card, they'll see where the edits are, so it'll show them if a change was made, so.
But they have to drill into their time card to see it, so they have to, they have to, they have to proactively be checking their time card to make sure that what they put in is still the same, and then raise the question otherwise.
See, I get an email alert, therefore I go and check, and then I log into the payroll system. But without that, I don't know if my boss is at home doing this.
So right now, when.
Then I wouldn't know.
Right now, when it changes me to their time card, it's sending them an email? Okay, I can look into it, like I say, I I'm not, I'm currently not aware, we offer that, but I can look into it.
It's just a transparency thing, so there's no surprises.
I hear ya. So the um yeah the way it's currently been set up is of course, you know, the employee needs to do a little bit of work to to look at the app, but we can, I can ask a question on that, see if it's a possibility for you.
Hey, Mark, um I use a different um system at my employer. But we're required to go in and approve our time card Monday morning before ten AM or at the end of our last shift worked. Does paychecks allow that functionality? It's just more or less a validation to what Harry was saying, was that I'm validating that these are the hours I put in.
Yep, so yeah, so they'll go in and they'll basically say, okay, time card's entered, they hit they hit approve, it's gonna get sent to their next level supervisor, and then there's a a level above that and so on, okay? I will certainly ask a question though about the email, I'm not sure, there is a dashboard inside of the actual app, and it does send people updates as far as like, you know, when you know, holidays are coming up, this and that, so there could be a way to basically send an alert email through there, so employees can know. Yeah, so employees can know, hey, look, this was edited, just so you know, but I can uh I can get your email, I'll find out for you.
Then we also have any other questions?
No, thank you.
Just a comment, if I if I did the math correctly, it looks like for us, it's about fifty-five hundred dollars a year.
That's about what I came up with.
Yeah, I came up same thing.
Depending on how many employees we have.
Fifty-seven I got, but you got.
First year's two hundred fifty dollars more expensive, so one time, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Yep, so there is no contracts with paychecks, just let me tell you, it's all service agreements, so you're not bound to paychecks. This pricing is not promotional, okay? We do three-year service agreements, so this is your pricing for thirty-six months, you will never see a uh rate increase in within three years. If you choose to leave paychecks before then, that's perfectly fine, like I say, there's no penalties, there's no cancellation fees, anything like that. Um but we put those in place, so there's no, everything's upfront, transparent, there's no, well, okay, after six months, your price is going to this, we don't do any of this.
If we do, if we do end up signing and canceling, we can get a full data extract of everything that's that's in there, correct? That that we own the data, even though you're posting it, correct?
Absolutely.
I'm sure that's in the contract, like when when we would be able to obtain ownership of it.
And there's um, it's about eighteen pages, which I'll which we give you folks during the set process, which you most likely have to give to your town lawyer to look over, it's got all the legal mumbo jumbo in there. I've read most of it, it's not a fun read, but um and they can look it over, but yeah, anything that's in the system is is yours, and we you can the nice thing is, everything's available to you twenty-four hours a day, so you can go in anytime, pull it up, if you need us to download everything into some files and send them to you, we can do that as well, we prefer that folks go in and download everything themselves, just because, you know, emails, the files, sensitive information, email, email. You know, we send everything to cure, but you know, sometimes folks forget to hit the secure button, and then your information's out there, so, like I say, we take the we take the security part very seriously. Cuz you have to. Questions?
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming up.
No problem. I will um just, nothing later, I'll shoot you an email tomorrow, maybe just give me everyone's emails, and I'll respond to everyone, and just so we with all the questions and everything, okay?
There's a YouTube channel with Select Board meetings, so you can now download and use that for your next sales pitch, you don't have to say a word.
Oh, yeah? Every time, and that's the, every time I hear myself on video, I think I sound like a five-year-old, my voice is, you know, I used to have a real bad lisp when I was a kid, I'm sure you guys can still hear it.
Uh you're fine.
Yeah.
I would suggest if you're gonna do a presentation on a projector, you should let where you're going know, so they can have a screen ready for you.
That would've been a great idea.
I do, I could've brought my screen in.
Oh, you did, uh, sorry.
Fred has a question.
Oh, Fred.
Brian's donating his.
I'll donate the use of it, I actually, no, I've actually got a big dry erase board that would be perfect for a screen, it's like that one, but about old ten times bigger.
Thank you. I hear she's a white wall.
Chairman, you continue or?
Uh, yeah, unless anybody has any other questions for Mark, last chance before he leaves.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on.
I have a long drive home, so if you need, just give me a ring.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Stuart's is still up and get grab a coffee.
Absolutely.
Next year's pay transport, transfer from health officer to deputy health officer, this is something you brought up.
Yep. So uh seeing as as chairman of the select board, uh I technically am the default health officer, however, as I'm not performing the duties and relying on the deputy, I think it would only be fair that Michael would be eligible for the stipend that I normally would be able to take, seeing as I'm not doing the job. I would, if I had time, uh I'm not drawing the stipend, I think it would be fair to let Michael take the stipend. So my thought process is is maybe we can have a pass, make a motion, pass it.
Sure.
That in the event that there is no elected health health officer performing the duty, or appointed health officer, I should say, the deputy would automatically be drawing the stipend as long as the deputy's doing the job. But upon appointment of a health officer, the stipend reverts back to the
Appointed health officer.
Appointed health officer. That that's my thought process.
That's fair.
You just need the motion, right?
Yeah, well, I didn't know if we wanted to discuss it, that's just my thought process.
I think you make a motion.
Shouldn't you get fifteen percent agent fee or something?
I'll settle for ten. Uh all right, then.
So I'll make a motion that the deputy health officer receive the stipend in lieu of the health officer not being able to perform the duties until such time as a regular health officer is appointed.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to award the, I don't know, give the stipend of the health officer to the deputy health officer in the event that the health officer is unappointed or unable to do their duties.
Bye, Mark.
Bye, thank you.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh and are we going to let Michael put in for back stipend all the way and when we first appointed him as deputy?
I'd like to make a motion, well, do, I I think that's fair.
The funds are there, I haven't drawn it, so it's it's not like we're double dipping.
Yeah, no, I think that's appropriate, fair.
He's been doing the job.
Got the hours logged, and there should be no issues.
Yeah, we've got his reports, so.
So I'll make a motion that we provide the back pay to the deputy health officer for the stipend dating back to when he began the position in July or whatever day that was, July first.
I will second that.
All right, we have a motion in a second to allow Michael to put in for back pay to when he first appointed to the position. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very kind of you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
The treasurer's quarterly report, it should be in your package. Accruals were completed, working with uh with me on the revolving loan information, uh worked on grant reimbursed reimbursement. Uh they're preparing, she's preparing for the nineteen audit by Bonadillo. Tax bills were mailed, attended respected in the workplace seminar, and third quarter reports are prepared for the state unemployment, comp, beamers, and nine forty-one IRS. She has not invested town monies to the state, spending is not predictable at this time, to lock money into a CD or another investment, and that's her report.
No, I was just thinking should we make a motion, and I know I'm jumping back to this, for um the treasurer to release the tax ID to the town clerk? I just thought of that, sorry.
I made a note myself.
I mean, are
Can we force, can we make a motion to have the treasurer do that would be my question, because the treasurer is an elected position.
But the tax ID number is under the jurisdiction.
The select board. Under our select board handbook.
It is.
Yes.
That's what I'm kinda wondering.
Because the select board is accountable for all the finances of the town.
When was the last time we asked the treasurer to give the tax number to the clerk?
Yes, good idea, if we're all communicating, maybe we should just ask, okay?
Yes.
Well, I think that's what they said was, you know, I think that's what they had said in the report, either make a motion or a directive to give it.
Okay, sorry, I just, I don't mean to backtrack.
Well, let's try to be nice about it first, and let's be civil about this, and all right, so
Yes.
Reach out to the treasurer and ask her to provide the tax ID to the town clerk. And then we will go from there. I think that's fair. Should should we give a deadline, like?
To answer or to?
Yeah, to, well, to provide it, I mean, not to answer.
It's just a matter of handing it over, if it's not done by the next meeting, let's have it on the, let's have maybe the confirmation on the next meeting, so we'll just, in the next meeting, go confirm.
Okay.
If it it has happened or it has not happened, and if not, what are we gonna do about it?
Okay, that's fair. Hope you're making a list, Linda, that we're gonna point the agenda for next meeting.
And next is the road foreman's report. They're gonna be blacktopping on Maple Grove Road in the end of October and the beginning of November, he'll keep it posted. We're pushing up against it with weather, uh the state's been kinda hogging up all the blacktop, so he's been having a tough time. Uh Pudding Stone and Berrington Roads will be done in the spring due to the weather and and whether the plant has availability availability to get the hot mix. There's still grading roads, weather permitting, uh winter sand, all put up in the warehouse and at the shop. Making roadways through the woods at the transfer station, getting ready for the test wells, that was completed. They're getting trucks inspected for winter weather, they helped put the signs up at the River Bend Trail System, and ditching and removing trees in the side of the roadways in the recent storm. And they're gonna be looking at doing tree removal where needed, uh they're gonna be doing that selectively. They ordered three hundred tons of salt to put in their salt shed, and a lot of that, I think, is completed, I saw the trucks backing them up in there. They they were putting it up here last last week, late last week.
Does anybody know what the farmer's al- almanac reports for this winter?
They're predicting a mild winter, I heard.
That would be great.
I do have a question, uh two questions, one, are we gonna post this on the town's website so that people can go back and refer to it?
I thought we had.
Okay, just, okay.
I'll confirm it.
And then can you follow up with the residents at ninety-seven East Court who I forwarded the inquiry about that culvert at the bottom of the hill and whether or not it's been cleaned out that backed up the other night?
They're getting qualified on the fire engine, I'll go do it, right?
I know, their comment was, we know Justin doesn't work for the town anymore, but he always came out and blew it out with the fire hose.
I don't know if that's allowed. I'm sure they were just doing it, but if the fire department out there doing that and say they blast the culvert out of the road, or they do damage to it.
Well, we got, we we got the pictures of it from the last time Justin did it and how clean it was, and then we got a picture of what it looked like after the storm.
There was something else, you, that was it, right?
Yeah, that was it, there was just.
Oh, and then confirm that the uh reporters on what episode?
Oh, yeah. Well, it was no, confirm that the um road report stays on the agenda for the second Thursday of every month as a standing item along with the auditor's report.
Yeah, that's all I have, sir.
Do we wanna ask Joel to come in to present the report, or are we fine with a uh a written report?
I think this is fine, I mean, unless.
I kinda say let it be Joel's choice, if he's got a written report, that's fine, if he wants to come in and address us, like
Yeah, I agree.
Let it be his choice.
I mean, if the if.
Man's busy enough as it is, I don't wanna chew up.
We want Joel to present it, then.
No. Yeah, he needs to have face to face with us, he does.
Um landfill west, we added that. Apparently, the the can you refresh my memory as to who the can you refresh my memory as to who the people are that are doing the work at the Landfill West?
That's the, uh, Green Mountain, or
Yeah.
Yeah.
Green Lantern.
Green Lantern, sorry.
Okay.
Uh, Solar, yes.
So they're, they didn't start the work 'cause they aren't a hundred percent clear as to whether or not we, the board
No, 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 okay, you're talking about, okay, West, I'm sorry. They just, they just, uh, they just wanted to make sure we're ready to go, the path is cut, they're ready to start drilling, uh, fourth, fifth, and sixth of November. You already passed it.
Right, that's what I thought.
I just wanna make sure that they
Just to be clear, it's not Green Lantern, Green Lantern?
I'm sorry, right. That's my mistake.
Is it CC or whatever?
Van, uh, Haas, it used to be Johnson Company, now it's, they merged.
Okay.
Thank you, I just
Because Joel did put on his road report, making roadways through the woods at the transfer station, getting ready for the test wells.
Correct.
So that's what they're, wanted to make sure we were ready for that.
And we actually found our mystery well. The NW one, we, nobody could find, it was all cut off and buried.
Oh, we did find it.
Yeah, we found it.
So we're all set, we're good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, I apologize for the gap there.
What was her name again, Van?
Uh, I don't have it.
I was looking for his card. Have it in the other. Actually, I have it on the map.
I'm gonna pass this, I think I emailed this to you. This is the, uh, contract, the buses.
Yeah, you emailed us the draft copy from the attorney on the bus contract along with the draft copy of the invoice.
Yes, and then the, uh, the, uh, Joel put in the bus information. As soon as you approve that, I'll fire that off to the school with the invoice. And I've got four
I'm, I'm sorry, quick question, that's been through, uh, uh, our, our lawyer?
Yes.
This, yeah, uh, Mr. Fisher drew this up.
It's Bob Fisher, yeah.
Michael provided the information to him, I was CC'd on all the emails. Uh, I initially signed off saying I didn't see any issue with it. Uh, I read through it, I was a little thrown off with the wording at the beginning, but once you read through it, then it looks fine.
And I'll be calling Ms. Martell at the school. And arranging for whatever next trips are, there were four on my desk.
Have you guys figured out a process for, like, if the seniors in Oak Hill in the school? Like, how all that's being coordinated and
My understanding was it was the
They're all just gonna call
Julie at the school was gonna be coordinating all that, was my understanding, that's why she stood here and said
Is she, is she a ten-month position or a twelve-month position, so like when the summertime comes and it's the
I believe she's
Summer rec program.
Twelve years, I think she's there all year.
She is all year, okay. And then this is, and not really off topic, but do we know if, um, the summer rec program that was under Powell Elementary School? Is that gonna continue with the merger of the school systems?
I don't see why it wouldn't.
So, so Powell can still set their own summer rec program? That's what I'm wondering, or is there now restrictions?
Well, that would be a question for the new school district.
Yeah, that's, but the, as a segue, uh, right now, uh, Chair of our Economic Development Committee is, is going to meetings with SPSU, they're working on what's called Century Twenty-One, it's a very large grant. That would set up year-round programs in each of the schools, and Powell is, really, they're focused on Powell and Shaftesbury. And if they get that grant, we'll have year-round programs for, for children.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So, she, she's working with them on that, it's very promising, looking
Awesome.
It's almost a million and five or something, divided amongst the school, the schools in, in the district.
Okay.
So, it but in terms of ours, I don't know that there's any change whatsoever, if it's been relayed to me. I had asked for, the, I got the number for, the Chair of that recommend, he asked for budget numbers. And when I call back, uh, I'll ask that question.
Okay. Okay, I will make a motion that we approve the contract?
I just want everybody to look at it before
So I'll make a motion that we approve the contract for submittal to the school for their signature? Alright, we have a motion in a second to approve the contract for submission to the school for their signature, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Then if there's no other discussion about the follow-up on the bus driver contract? When we got into new business, Bob wanted to, uh, discuss about the ethics policy?
Alright, well, I'm, um, it's probably gonna get a little contentious, but I need to correct some of the statements, and I do have some objections to the policy that we passed in the previous meeting. Um, first of all, I wanna apologize for not being able to attend the meeting, I was at, at, I was working and I was on California time, so the meeting started. Uh, I, I was not able to dial in till we got to executive session. I thought I would be able to, and I wasn't. Uh, there were some statements made in the, in the, in the open session, um, uh, that I think misrepresented a position that I had on the ethics policy, and I've found more things about the ethics policy, and I, I, unless somebody, unless we get some really comforting information about what we just passed, I'm gonna be making a motion that we rescind it. Um, what was said exactly was, there was discussion and concern that an ethics policy in public administration and public sector is not something that is normally done. Having an advanced degree in public administration, I suggest that's not true. I have over twenty-five citations of different texts and studies like the American Society of Public Administration and other areas that wholly endorse an ethics policy within town government. Brian, you then asked the question at some point that, uh, how does this policy, the one you have drafted, compare to what the BLCT offers for a model policy? The answer was it follows fairly closely. Um, that he used some different language and found some things. And then, we passed it, because you stated, uh, that, uh, just to get something on the record and we can change it later. But it was passed mostly because it followed the BLCT language. Um, one thing is I wanna correct this, at no time did I or anyone, and I assume that was referring to me, 'cause I'm the only one that ever objected to any of the ethics policies that were put before the board. Uh, at no time did I or anyone else on the board object to having an ethics policy, nor did anyone suggest that municipalities don't normally have them. I did state municipalities do not have core values the same way that private organizations do. I also questioned the need to have two separate policies, one for ethics and another for conflict of interest. I was open to the suggestion, but I have to date not found a single town, a single example of any town that has two separate policies, one for a category of ethics known as conflict of interest, and a different for all other categories of ethics. Every town I have found has one policy covering both. And I just wanna talk a little bit about the history on this too, now the, my other objection to it was also that it was, that it was
May I, sir, just real quick? If I may, I apologize to the gentleman for misinterpretation of his statements. If that's, if you accept that, I appreciate it.
I do accept your
Thank you.
Uh, but I still have some, some issues with the policy that we passed.
You have every right to.
Okay.
Alright, um, and, and I wanna just talk about some of the history, because the, the history here is we had a board member who insisted that we have two separate policies. A policy was drafted and put before the board that I spent literally hours going through, trying to figure out why this was so far from what I would perceive as an ethics policy. I, I, I later found out that that policy was the Rutland Regional Medical Center's corporate compliance policy, it wasn't even an ethics policy. I spent many hours editing that. Without any fanfare about that misinformation, we went straight from that into evaluating other towns and other ethics policies. My other objection to the policy is that the policy we did pass last time is a statement of core values, there is no ethics policy in it. It is not an actionable policy, it is simply a statement of core values that normally come before an ethics policy. I did find that exact language at multiple corporations and businesses, I did not find that exact language at any municipality. And in every case, it was the opening to a comprehensive ethics policy that included conflict of interest, but it was also a comprehensive ethics policy. I believe I have found the original source of that information, and the original source of that information is SHRM.org, which is a professional human resources organization. My, now I have two problems with this, by being subjective in our language and passing this as a policy, we are weaponizing our policy. If you take a look at what that policy says, it is, and their good core values, build trust and credibility, and a paragraph on that, create a culture of open and honest communication, set the tone at the top, uphold the law, accurate and timely public disclosures. I found this exact language as an opening, as an opening to comprehensive ethics policies, but nowhere was this passed as a, as a standalone policy. I did go through the citations that you provided to make the argument for an ethics policy, but I think you didn't have to convince anybody, everybody here agrees that we should have an ethics policy. The fact is, we do have one, we have one that was vetted by the BLCT. It is a model policy concerning conflict of interest and ethical behavior. I, and we've known for over a year that Montpelier has been working on beefing up ethics based on the complaints that they get. Uh, my guess is, once that's done, the BLCT will create a new model policy, and I dollars to donuts, it'll be one policy, not two separate policies. If it's too separate, I'm fine with that too, but I would suggest that we wait until the BLCT comes out with their model policy language before we adopt anything. The other reason I want to make sure that we take, um, that was most of the policy, the other, uh, the last paragraph in the policy that we passed, which is, uh, accurate and timely public disclosure, I believe came from INC.org. Both of those organizations sell that language, I believe. Uh, I believe that we, we're, we could be in, uh, a copyright infringement here, and I think we need to pull this back. I don't believe we have permission to use this language. Everywhere where I found this, and I found multiple copies, it was nearly identical language, it was corporate at every single one of them, not a single municipality with this exact language. And, uh, and what's more, it was a, as I stated, an opening to a comprehensive ethics policy. This is the actual policy right out of SHRM.org. And it has the exact same opening. Uh, build trust and credibility, respect for the individual, create a, 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 a culture of open and honest communication, set the tone at the top. And then it goes into a very comprehensive ethics policy. So I'm gonna make a motion that we rescind the ethics policy that we passed on October tenth. On the grounds that it is weaponizing our policy. When you're, when you are not precise in your language, can I really write somebody up, because I don't think they're trustworthy enough or credible enough? Or, or because I don't think they're showing enough respect? I mean, this is what we've done with a policy, I believe this policy makes us less ethical, not more ethical, as I'll get off my soapbox now.
It's a lot to digest.
Yeah.
A lot to think about.
I'm gonna second it at this time, because if we're infringing on proprietary
Yeah, that, that's something that's worth, worth further investigation, just to be safe, I, I would agree with that. Just on that grounds alone, until we can figure it out, and make sure that we're not gonna chance getting a possible cease and desist.
Can I make a recommendation that perhaps we contact Larry Novens, who's the Executive Director of the Vermont Ethics Commission? And have him come down and talk to us about an ethics policy, who, who is the, the, the group that is looking and working with the BLCT to write a separate ethics policy for municipalities at this time? Um, I met him at the, uh, town fair up in, um, up in Rutland, at, uh, Stratton. When, um, that was held up there, and I did ask him about that.
We have a motion in a second, so we have an open motion on the floor at the moment.
Well, this is discuss, this is the discussion part.
I hadn't gotten officially to that.
Oh, sorry.
I just wanna make sure we're
Then why did you acknowledge my hand raised hand?
Because you would've just started talking either way.
That's rude, and I wouldn't have.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
So, we have a motion in a second, is there any discussion?
Well, I think just an answer to, uh, Ms. Pellon's, uh, suggestion, is we can easily just call him and ask him, I don't think we have to have him come down, and there is no objection to two separate policies. Uh, I have not found a single example where that exists, that's not the issue.
Perhaps maybe he can, perhaps maybe he can provide a draft, a draft one?
Mm-hmm.
That we could all agree on.
And even if
That is safe.
Well, now, um, I do, I do wanna, his name is Larry Novens. He's the Executive Director of the Vermont Commission on Ethics. Um, I also wanted to state that we, as a work, uh, work group, not too long ago, we had a work group where we were looking at examples of municipal ethics policies.
Yep, we looked at one from Ontario, Canada.
We looked, there were like three, and we agreed that we would all go back and look at some options, and that we would bring it back to the table and kind of talk about what we found and what we felt would be good in a policy. So
We did, and then we started concentrating on trying to get the town
We did have some examples, yeah.
So, Bob?
Well, yes, and in every, and I did scrutinize every one of those examples that were brought here, and every one of them contained conflict of interest. The only statement I found in any of those policies that we don't currently have in our policy, unless I missed it, is a statement about treating everybody equal without, uh, without, uh, regard to, uh, to protected class. If we simply added that statement to our current policy, we would have everything in the policies that we've looked at, and we would have one policy covering ethics. I would point out the conflict of interest is not separate from ethics, it is a category of ethics.
But if we, and I agree with you, but if we put that statement in there, would that would that then impact the subjective rationale for why some taxpayers who come in to make copies of deeds and whatnot are charged and some aren't? So would it prevent that? Because the town clerk has discretion. And so would, would a statement like that impact that? And I don't want it to negatively impact that.
My objection was that I'm comfortable when we have BLCT-approved language. When we have the language that is vetted by their lawyers and that it is model policy, I am not comfortable when we deviate from it. And I believe that's why the question was asked, how closely does this resemble the LCT language? And I believe the board passed it based on the answer.
You didn't answer my question, but I'll accept whatever you just said.
Well, that's, that's the discussion
I wanna make sure that it doesn't impact, so by saying everybody must be treated equally based on classification, and the state has a very broad level of what, what's classified. But then that would then impact our town clerk's ability to subjectively decide things that is within her jurisdiction to, um, decide.
I think what we're talking now is
But this is But staff who are on our benefits have to follow those policies.
I don't think that's, well
So, that's what I'm saying, is then does that impact that?
I believe state statute might trump that, though.
The, the
And if it's in her statutes to be able to be subjective.
But I'm just saying, we need to make sure.
And I'm not suggesting that we put it in and pass it right now, I'm not gonna make a motion to pass a different ethics policy.
No, I'm open to hearing from this gentleman from the state and seeing what he has to say.
And my only motion here today is to, is to rescind the one that we've passed on the tenth.
And if it is true that it is copyrighted material, I, just on that grounds alone, I, I would, I would vote in favor of rescinding it, just on, until we hear from the gentleman that you suggested. Cause I don't wanna see us get a cease and desist in potential, not saying it's gonna happen. Why put ourselves in that position?
I, I, I don't think it meets copyright infringement, but that's my interpretation.
SRHM has that exact policy and an order, and they ask you very specific questions about how you are going to use it. This is the full comprehensive policy of which these core values, uh, uh, are in front of. They ask you how they're using it, how you use it, um, uh, and what policy you want in order for them to price it.
So, I just wanna
They sell it to you.
Right.
Go ahead.
So, I'm a member of SHRM, which is the Society for Human Resource Management, SHRM. And as a member, I can use all of their resources for human resource needs. We, the body, the Select Board, are the Human Resource Office by extension of the Town of Powell. So if there's tools that SHRM offers, I by extension, as a member of SHRM, can use those, and we, as a Select Board, can use them. Which is why I don't think it arises to copyright.
Well, I hope that's true, but then I would ask, why didn't we, why didn't we pull a full policy, why did we just pull out the core values?
Uh, we didn't write the policy. But I'm more than happy to get the Society of Human Resources Policy on Ethics to share. If that's what you want, but I'd, but I'd rather If that's what you want, but I'd, but I'd rather have the Vermont State Ethics Executive Director
So would I.
Kinda give us some feedback.
So would I, the SHRM is a, uh, organization that caters mostly to the private sector, not to the public sector, I found zero examples on their website of public sector. They, they do counsel private sector on how to interact with public sector, but they don't write public sector policy.
Okay.
To my knowledge.
Marlena.
So, I was at a payroll law class today, and I met a lot of people in human resources, some who work for municipalities who are all members of SHRM. So, it, it's, it's an organization that supports human resources, it is the, it is the top organization that you're recommended to belong to if you work in human resources.
I understand, but it's not the BLCT.
So let's reach out to this gentleman that you suggested.
We gotta blow on motion first.
Oh, we're still in the discussion.
Yeah, we still have to vote.
Alright, so we have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor of rescinding the policy in lieu of hearing from this gentleman here that Marlena suggested? And then, going forward from there, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. So, Michael, please reach out to this individual and see if we can coordinate a phone call or
Gentlemen?
Sure.
Thank you.
I have a business card at home.
And depending on when you hear back from him, uh, schedule it into the next agenda.
You have a conference call?
Yeah, for a conference call, unless he wants to drive all the way down, I'm assuming he's coming out of Montpelier. I'm just assuming, I'm assuming he'd rather do a phone
I don't know where he lives.
Larry Novins?
Larry Novins, Executive Director of the Vermont Ethics Commission. N-O-V-I-N-S. How do you need that again?
Okay, so, is there any other, well, we didn't add it to the agenda, so now it's, uh, executive session for, uh, personnel and legal. So, I would like to make a motion that we enter into executive session for personnel.
Can I, can I ask?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have just
You're so quiet, I forgot you were there, Fred, I'm sorry.
Please announce who you are.
Yeah, I'm Fred Miller. Um, I just had a question on, on the, uh, ongoing search for a health officer.
Yes.
Progress on that, do you have a progress report?
Yes.
Any, um, any information to the public on
Yup.
Michael just said yes.
Yes, uh, there was interviews held, and, uh, but the interview panel, which consisted of four of the select persons, decided not to hire at this time, and he tasked me with writing a new job description, first draft of which they have.
So, what, we, we decided to have more description in the job description as to what's actually entailed with the job. Cause we had, we, we had one individual come down who didn't really know what the job was, who interviewed for it. And it was kinda disturbing to us, and we realized, it doesn't really
It was vague.
It was very vague.
Yeah.
So.
So we're trying to provide more details and
For those, for those
That way people that apply for it are better informed.
Are, are still invited to apply again.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, we'll end up posting it again, it's not out of any malice against anybody, just we realized how vague the job description was.
Gonna fight a decision.
And then with Michael's input from doing the job, we realize that it needs a lot more detail.
Job descriptions are a good thing to have.
Mm-hmm.
For sure.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so we have a motion to enter into executive session for personnel. And, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, welcome to executive.